Welcome everyone to our January 29th Angels Camp City Council Special Meeting. Would you, let me roll down my agenda here before I get too far ahead, but I do want to just ask when we come up to the podium, please be cautious. We do have multiple cameras in our current setting and some extension cords running across the floor, so please pay particular attention to that and stay safe. Thank you. Roll call, Rose.
Mayor Ximente.
Present.
Vice Mayor Scherrato.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Beehill.
Present.
Staff is present.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Steve?
I, I'm good with the status, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Any other public or public here? Any comments about the agenda? Hearing none.
Beehill.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Moncada.
Aye.
Ximente.
Aye.
Scherrato.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda. That is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public who would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda tonight? Here, present, or online? Rose, we have folks online?
We just have Caitlin.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our regular agenda. We, when the council started talking about raising rates, we thought it would be a good idea to do a study session, a workshop, prior to our formal approval, and that's what this meeting is about tonight. So I appreciate everyone here in attendance. I appreciate staff and Michael here to help explain what we're doing. And with that, we'll move on to the presentation on our wastewater, wastewater rates and workshop. And I'm not sure who is going to start. Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Rose, if you can bring up the...
One second, Steve.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd just like to thank everyone for their interest and especially those that are either here in attendance or online. As the mayor said, the purpose of this is an informational meeting. It's to make sure that people have the information to make an informed decision when we come to our public hearing, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, February 4th. So, the City of Angels is conducting a Proposition 218 Water and Wastewater Rate Study to ensure reliable and sustainable services. Our goal is to provide transparency and answer questions about the proposed changes. I would like to just talk a little bit about the history, although I wasn't here. I found either documents or consulted with staff, and just want to share a few things. So our current rate study was adopted in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. That's the rate study on which we operate today. And the history that brought us to where we are today in the last probably year and a half looks like this. In October of 2023, the council awarded a contract to Bartle Wells and Associates to conduct a new five-year water and wastewater study. Over the course from that October 3rd meeting, over the course of the next, it looks like about seven months from October through July, staff and Bartle Wells met frequently. Either personal interactions, email conversations, telephone conversations, there appears to have been a healthy exchange of information between the water rate consultant and staff to develop the information that the consultant needs to prepare this water rate study. That brings us to July of 2024. So all of those conversations from October through July was kind of internal between the water rate consultant and staff. The public portion of this started on July 16th. On July 16th, Bartle Wells presented for the first time a draft rate study to the city council. That was the first opportunity in an open public meeting for the public to be informed on the results of what Bartle Wells had determined to that point in consultation with staff. It was an open meeting. There was opportunity for public comment. And it was really the first time the council had an opportunity to hear in a public way what the initial leanings or the initial recommendation from the consultant was. That was July 16th. The next month, in August, there was a special city council meeting, again, open to the public, and it was held specifically for the purpose of discussing the rate study. Bartle Wells presented additional information that wasn't presented at the July meeting. They presented that additional meeting in the August. So now we have two public meetings open for comment and questions and really transparency for the process. October 4th, I'm sorry, October 1st, there was a third meeting in which Bartle Wells presented to the city council, again during an open regularly scheduled meeting, finalized rates or the proposals for the finalized rates. That was in October. In November, on November 5th, staff brought to the city council a draft version of the required notice that would go out to the ratepayers notifying them of the public hearing and the 45 days between the time the notice went out and the actual public hearing. That draft was brought to city council on November 5th. City council recommended a couple of amendments, so we went back, amended the letter a little bit, brought the letter back to the city council for, this is now the fifth meeting, November 19th, where the city council approved the final version of the public notice that was going to go out to the ratepayers. That public notice did go out to the ratepayers on December 20th of this year, which provides for the 45-day period between the time the public notice was given and the scheduled public hearing on February 4th. As we sit today, we are six days away from the scheduled public hearing on February 4th, and the city has received a total of six protest letters from our approximately 1,800 water and wastewater customers. I will tell you that the majority of those letters, the majority of those protests, I would say four out of the six are concerned primarily with this pass-through language.
With UTEC.
So that's the primary concern that we've heard in these six protest letters that we've seen. And I think Michelle has brought them if you need more information about that. So that brings us to the current. I do want to thank Michelle has done a great job and her staff and Rose. It is impressive, the work that they do, the quality of work, the timing, the planning, the organization. So I do thank you for that. We also have with us tonight to answer questions, provide information, we have Michael DeGroot from Bartle Wells. Thank you very much for being here. We also have our attorney, Will Krieger, in case there are any legal questions. In the back of the room, we have Joel Metzger from UTEC, not part of the presentation, but if any UTEC-type questions come up, I want to thank him for being willing to be here and participate in the openness and the transparent process that we're going through. And we also have our Public Works Superintendent Chris O'Flynn in the back. He is the one that is responsible for our water and wastewater, the operation, the maintenance, the ongoing day-to-day activities with that system. So I asked Chris to be here just in case there are any questions that I can't answer that are specific to the water system. So, I would like to pass it on to Michael, but before I do, my experience, and I've only been here for six months, my experience is that this has been, and the purpose for this meeting again tonight, I'm sure you'll hear this a couple of times, is to provide accurate, transparent, factual, data-driven information so that both you as a city council and the public can be informed prior to this public hearing on February 4th. Last thing, and then I'll pass it on, and I'm sure this will be emphasized over and over tonight again. The current recommendation as it stands now is for up to, and again, emphasize up to, 2% increase in water, I'm sorry, wastewater, 3% increase in water, and a 6.22 increase in the UTEC fees. And now's time to thank the council, because when I first got involved in this and first heard the recommendations, it was 5% water, 5% wastewater, 10% UTEC. And the council asked us to sharpen our pencils, do what we can to reduce those rates so that there's less of an impact on the ratepayer. And through a lot of work of staff and Bartle Wells, we were able to reduce that from 5%, 5% and 10% down to 2%, 3% and 6.2. And again, this is an up to. The council has an opportunity annually at minimally every year. When it comes time to raise the rates, they can raise it up to, but it doesn't mean they have to. They can keep it at zero, they can go at half percent, a 1%. And those recommendations will be made by staff based on the needs of the system at the time. We will make recommendations to the council. The council has the authority to raise the rates up to these percentages. So, with that, what you will hear tonight in the presentation, we have planned capital improvement projects for water and wastewater systems. We will talk about how rate adjustments will support infrastructure and ongoing operations. We'll talk a little bit about rate comparison and potential impact on monthly bills, and finally, a financial overview focusing on the cost of operations. So unless you have any questions for me right away, I would suggest that just the process, staff give their presentation, staff including the water consultant, let us get through our presentation and see if the council has any questions about the presentation. And then again, the real purpose for this meeting is opening it to the public. If anybody in the public has any questions about any part of it, we'd be happy to answer as best as we can. So...
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
So, I was under a different, I'm just trying to nail this down. I thought we were 2% water, well, I was 2% wastewater, 6 point whatever it was to UTEC. That was actually a 10, but we're going to offset with the reserve.
Exactly.
And then up to 3% on water.
That's right.
So I just want to make the difference between wastewater were at 2, UTEC were at the 6 whatever, and then water is on its own up to 3%. All three were up to. I just want to make sure that the water was up to, that the water we can move. The other ones were fixed.
Well, we could decide...
Yeah, thank you. It's a good point of clarification. It's my understanding that all three categories are an up to. It will likely be the recommendation based on what I've heard, that two of those three will probably stay at those rates, and that will likely, based on projects that we have planned, will stay at those rates. But the city council does have the opportunity to not increase by those 2, 3, and 6.22 in each of those categories.
Correct.
So I have one more thing to add to. In your timeline, council had requested a presentation on capital improvement projects and what was realistic and what we could accomplish in those five years and what we felt we had to push further out of the five years, which did bring down drastically the not needed for CIP. So I just want to make that note.
And then I think just one more thing for our audience. One of the things that we did do is during this last rate increase, we built up a reserve, and the council talked long and hard, because we put about $10 million, and you will see that in this presentation on capital improvement projects. Thank you, Chris, for your help with that. And decided that, you know, we can spend down our reserve, and we actually have a little bit more reserve to fund those projects if they go over, because they were thought about years ago and everything with inflation, et cetera. But through a variety of reasons, COVID and a lot of other things, we weren't able to implement those projects. And we're on board now, and Michael and Steve will talk about that. So we are moving forward and being mindful of what is tolerable. So with that.
Okay, thank you very much. So if there...
I have one question. Do you have copies of the objections?
Not copies, we have originals of the objections if you'd like to see them.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no more questions for me, I'd like to hand it over to Michael DeGroot.
Good evening. So, I'd like to start with why are we here? So essentially, the city conducts a comprehensive review of your capital improvement projects, your water consumption and your operating expenses every five years through an independent consultant. And as mentioned, my name is Michael DeGroot, and I am the independent consultant with Bartle Wells Associates. And over three council meetings, the proposed rate increases, which were initially 5% for both water and wastewater, were reduced to 3% for water and 2% for wastewater to address the council's concerns about affordability. And in addition to that, we discussed various topics, including the UWPA rates, and those rates are a pass-through for your wholesale water costs with UTEC Water and Power Authority. And we also discussed your reserve account analysis and scenarios for funding large capital improvement projects using debt. Ultimately, we decided not to pursue the debt options because that would have required an increase in revenue requirements to fund the debt service. So, next slide. These are the legal requirements for Proposition 218. You have procedural requirements and substantive requirements. So the procedural requirements are you need to mail a notice of the proposed rate increase to all the affected property owners. You need to hold a public hearing, adopting the proposed rate increases not less than 45 days after the required notices are mailed. And so the city has gone ahead and done the mailing, and the public hearing is scheduled for February 4th. There's also the substantive requirements. The amount of the fee or charge levied on any customer shall not exceed the proportional cost of service attributable to that customer. Revenues derived from the fee or charge cannot exceed the funds required to provide the service. And revenues derived from the fee or charge can only be used for the purpose for which the fee is imposed. Next slide. So, this is an overview of the rate study under Prop 218. The purpose is to evaluate your financial needs and make sure that you have long-term financial sustainability, as well as complying with state and federal regulations. And it ensures fair and equitable distribution of costs among the ratepayers. We also want to ensure adequate funding for your operations, maintenance, and infrastructure improvements. Next slide. The key components of the rate study is the cost of service analysis, where we determine the cost to provide water and wastewater service, such as treatment, delivery, and administration. We look at your revenue requirements and assess the current and future costs, such as operating costs, capital improvement, and debt service. And then we look at the rate design and the rate structure to develop a fair and legally defensible rate structure that aligns with customer usage patterns. And we also look at your capital improvement funding to identify the necessary infrastructure projects and how rate increases will fund them over time. Next slide. So once again, the Proposition 218 public approval process, agencies need to mail the notices to the affected property owners at least 45 days before the public hearing. The ratepayers have the right to submit written protests, and if the majority of these property owners submit a protest, the rate increase cannot proceed. And if the majority does not protest, then the governing body can approve the rate adjustments. And I'll turn it over to discuss the capital improvement program.
Okay, thank you, Michael. That's me again. So, the next couple of slides is kind of a recap of what councilmember Scherrato talked about, where we went over all of the capital improvement projects that were included. And the council, again, did a great job of making sure that the projects that staff proposed are realistic, necessary, not overburdening. And in doing so, we actually eliminated several of the proposed, or I wouldn't say eliminated, postponed might be a better word, looking realistically at what we can accomplish in the next five years. The council did a great job of scaling those projects back so that it would have the least impact on these proposed rates as possible. So I want to talk about each one of these briefly. These are the projects in the Water Capital Improvement Plan that we believe we can accomplish in the next five years. The first one is WPT2. It is the Transmission Main Replacement. This is the main water line, and in fact, the only water line that transports water from our water treatment facility down to our users. There is only one line, and it is aged, and it is in need of replacement. The plan with this project is to create a second water line that will become the primary water line that transports water from our water treatment facility down to the distribution to our customers. We intend to keep the line that's in place now serviceable as a backup redundant water line, because right now we only got one. So, this project, about $2.1 million, is for the purpose of providing a new primary line while keeping the existing line as a backup secondary line. We believe we can accomplish that in the five years. Project number two, WDP1 Mark Twain Road. This is a project that we have already started. We're already, we've gone through initial engineering. There's been boots on the ground doing surveys of the area. We have plans in place. We're very confident this will get done within the next five years, probably within the next year or so. The benefit of this is in this particular neighborhood, there are water lines that provide water service to residents, but they basically dead-end. And they're close in proximity to each other. So the purpose of this project is to loop lines within this neighborhood together, so that if one line goes down, it can still be supplied by the other line. It's kind of a redundant type backup for this neighborhood in particular, where these lines right now dead-end. $680,000 estimate for that project, and we've already started it. Third project, WTM2 Murphy's Grade Road Transmission Line Update. So if you look at the first one, the Transmission Line Replacement, which is the main water line that starts at the water treatment plant and comes down to Murphy's Grade Road, when it hits Murphy's Grade Road, it basically follows Murphy's Grade Road down the main street. Well, there are sections of that line that are of different capacities. Some are eight inches, some are six inches, some are I don't know how many inches. The intent of this project, this third project on the slide, is to create a consistent and reliable, the same capacity line going all the way down, so it doesn't have to ebb and flow as it goes to the main line, but then spread out and serve our customers. We are pretty confident that we can accomplish that within the next five years, and the estimate is $2.3 million on that one. The last two projects in the water, if you can switch slides, we have started both of these. Pressure Relief Valves and Automatic Meter Reader Project. Chris O'Flynn is in charge of both of these. So the pressure relief valves, there are 12 pressure relief valves throughout the city, and the pressure relief valves, the design of those, the intent of those is to stabilize the flow throughout the city's water system so that it doesn't bottleneck, it doesn't build up, you don't turn your water on in your house and get a sudden gush of water. The intent of these pressure relief valves is to make sure that if pressure builds up in a certain area of town, water gets dumped out, so that that increased pressure doesn't follow its way into your house and blow your lines out. That's the purpose of the pressure relief valve. Chris is already on it. He started the project. We haven't started construction on the project. What we have started is we intend to start installing in March. And by we, I mean subcontractors. We're going to hire a company to come and do them all at once. And we plan to start that project in March. We've already done the initial cost estimates and research necessary to do that. Last one in water is the Automated Meter Reader Project. We have also started that. We have in fact ordered all of the automated meter readers along with the software necessary to run the system. At this point, the stage of the process that we're in right now is we're just waiting to receive that equipment. We will then, like we're going to do with the pressure relief valves, we will hire a contractor that will come out and over the course of time, replace every meter in the city to be an automated meter reader. And what that does for us is, right now, we have five staff members that go out monthly and they commit, I don't know how many days of that month, to physically walk on property and with a pencil and paper, read a meter and write a number. Well, there's human error involved in that. We have a great staff, but there's the opportunity for numbers to be transposed. When the numbers get back to the office, maybe they're keyed in wrong. This eliminates all that. It's automated from the meter to the system, and it reduces the staff time necessary to walk on these properties and read those things. They will then, instead of walking on each property, they have a tablet that they can drive through the neighborhood, and those signals are sent to their tablet. So it reduces staff time and increases accuracy. I will mention something about this one. Actually, the one above. The pressure relief valve, we have $980,000. We think that we can come in at a number significantly less than that. So the next slide recaps all of these water projects that I just talked about, so I won't go over all of them again, but the thing where it says zero to five years, those are the six projects that I just talked about. When we went through and made the last presentation to the council about capital improvement, we gave them a priority, high, medium, and low, and estimated cost and the funding source. When you see pay-go, that means that it is from rates and rate increases that are necessary to make these projects happen, using from the money that we actually have available to make these projects go. We have a six to 10-year category, which we don't think we can accomplish in the five years, and some of those are grant-based, like the first one is $6.6 million. That will be a combination of grants and debt and possibly a little bit of pay-go. We didn't think it was appropriate to put that in this rate study. Any questions about water before I move on to wastewater?
Just one quick question.
Yes.
The debt, that's a nonstarter, is that right? Because we don't have the revenues in the program to support it. Mike, you mentioned that. Okay, so we can board that. It has to be grant or pay-go?
Yes, and we don't have any projects in this first year that is debt. Okay.
Thank you.
And what the council decided, Scott, was to use the $20 million reserve that we had collected previously with the old rate study to fund these projects, because these projects, for whatever reason, were stalled and never got started. So we have money available to do these projects.
Okay, thank you. If I can move on to wastewater, Rose? All right. We have these three projects in wastewater. One is, the first one is WWCS 1 and 2, the Boosters Way Vallecito and East Angels Sewer Replacement. Another project that we've already started, we have actually completed the Booster Way section of this project, and that was a significant need in our community, because basically, all of the sewer water in this town collects in that one area, and if there's a problem, then there's a big problem. And it would not allow for increases, increased housing or commercial. We were basically at a standstill. We could not allow additional customers into our system until we fix this problem. We've now fixed this problem. Thank you, Chris. We're now moving on to the Vallecito section. This is a $2.9, this is a $3 million project. So we've completed Booster. We are in the engineering stage of Vallecito. Those engineering plans are complete. We plan to initiate that, the work on that project during this calendar year, and that will take about a year and a half or so. And then we'll move on to the East Angels section of the project. So we believe that we can accomplish this entire thing, Booster, Vallecito, and East Angels in the five-year plan. Second one is WWCS 3, which is the Main Street Sewer Replacement. This is... This is sewer line along Main Street or Highway 49 in the downtown area of 49 where sections of that sewer line quite honestly has failed. And so it is necessary to replace this line. It's a $700,000 estimated project cost, but it is of significant benefit for the community and absolutely necessary to get that done. The last one on this slide is WWCS four, which is Murphy's Grade Road Sewer Rehab. In that similar section where I talked about the water line and the lines go from eight inches to six inches and back and fluctuate like that, in that same area, although in a smaller area, but along that same area, there are multiple manhole covers and sewer access points. And it is inefficient, to say the least, as it is now. This project cleans that up. It provides a new sewer line along that area to make that area flow more efficiently. And again, we believe we can accomplish that in the five year plan. Next slide, Rose. So those are the zero to five year. The only one I didn't talk about is the INI project. The INI stands for infiltration? No, Chris, help me.
Inflow and infiltration.
Inflow and infiltration. So basically, Chris contracts with outside companies to come in and scope our system. Stick a camera down in the pipes and see in a preventative type and in a restorative type way, where are there problems in our system? And it allows us to immediately take action if we find a problem and it allows us to plan for future projects if we see something that's not to the point where it absolutely has failed and is crumbling and we need to take action now, but just notes for self to recognize that this at some point is going to need to be addressed.
And the INI issue is a huge issue, especially when we have tremendous rain. Cause that rain then floods Chris's system. And it was a project on the books to, to expand the capacity out there. But you know, the hope is if we can take care of this and lessen the amount of water that flows into Chris's system, the longer that your current system will last.
Correct.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Chris, is it possible or and Steve, to tie the Murphy's Grade projects together? So you're doing a water line and the INI projects all, so we don't tear it up 14 times?
Yeah, Chris and I had a discussion about that today in preparation for this meeting. I think we've talked about it before also, I think in open council meetings as well. As just amongst staffs. If we're going to tear up a road once and it's whether it's water or sewer, if there's two projects, let's just do it all at once. And so that's the idea behind that.
And then I, I haven't been on council long enough, but the Main Street Sewer Line is, are there any Caltrans sidewalk projects that we have to be aware of or work in conjunction with, or is it totally separate, Chris?
At this point, it's separate. I know there is a downtown like improvement plan that that could kind of coexist in, but I'm, as far as any Caltrans work now.
Okay. Thank you.
Last thing on this slide, and then if you guys have any questions, is the zero to five year projects, just like on the water side, the wastewater projects are all pay go. We're not incurring debt. We do have one grant we've received, not received, we have been awarded $790,000 from FEMA as part of the East Angels section of that Booster, Vallecito, East Angels project. So 790 of that 2.9 million is funded by a grant. The rest is pay go through the rate payers. Any questions about capital improvement projects? All right. If not, I will hand it off to Michelle.
Thank you. So we're going to talk about our rates, how they compare to like agencies in our region. So our first graph we're looking at here is for water. And this came, is right from our rate study. Borrow Wells prepared this for us and you can see the dotted line that says average, that's our average for our regional area. So the blue arrow under the column that's for Angels Camp is our current water rate. And then the proposed at the 3% increase is the white arrow. So we're still under the regional average even with the rate increase. And then compared to our similar agencies, we're still on the lower half for our water rates in compared to Twain Hard or CCWD. And this is actually, this is, this data is about a year old because this is from January 2024, when we started beginning our rate study. So it doesn't reflect any current rates that they've increased. It's about a year old data. So at that time, this is how we compare to some of those. Let me go on to the next slide. So this is the same data for sewer, for our wastewater program. So in our wastewater program, we are above the regional average. You can see the green arrow 107 is our current rate, 110 would be the proposed. So we're slightly on the higher side there. This is also part of the reason, I think, when we were looking at expenses and determining in our various meetings, we went with a 2% increase to ease that so we can get closer to the regional average. Now, this is also a year old of data and I know that recently we had heard about some large increases like the Jamestown Sanitary District and others increasing their sewer rates from $81 a month up to $130 a month. So it's a 65% rate increase mainly because they hadn't increased rates and, and they are also running out of deficit budget and needing infrastructure and borrowing debt. So those are factors that we're trying to avoid. We're also trying by keeping it at two and three percent increase. We're easing in that adjustment instead of going with no increase and then having to hit them with 10% or more double digit increase. So this eases in the rate increase over the period of the five years. Okay, let me go on to the next slide. Sorry. Yeah, sure. So you want to go back to the?
Yeah, just really quickly. And so when we compare to those others, I realize that we're just looking at rates, but how do we compare in terms of people that are being served? Is that part of why some are high and some are low?
Yeah, I think a couple of things on this survey. One is the, there's a quite a few Mariposa County agencies that are really small. So that county serves regions that could be like 50 EDUs. So Yosemite West, Don Pedro, Mariposa Pines and Colterville. A lot of those are pretty heavily subsidized by the county and any big increases as well. And I'm not 100% sure of the populations of these other agencies, but that's something that we could look at.
I was just curious because I assume that that does make a difference in terms of something higher and so it's more me just kind of pointing that out.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. And this, in terms of our rate study, this for the next five years, they, Borrow Wells didn't take into account growth for Habitat and the 107 units, but that was the only growth that we had projected. So if we have more growth, it'll only benefit us because more people connecting the systems that reduce the costs. In our next rate study, that will affect keeping those rates low. So that's all a positive.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So you can go on. So what does this mean for you? So the rate increases will fund essential upgrades to water and wastewater infrastructures, we heard in our capital improvement plan, ensuring reliable and safe services to the community. These improvements help address aged systems and prepare for future growth. And then the modest rate adjustments are designed to account for rising costs. And so we looked at a 5% increase in our operating costs over the next 10 years. We had put in a factor in there of a 5% increase. And so we look at materials, labor and operations. It also ensures that the city can continue providing high quality services without sacrificing maintenance or project funding. And so by, this is, you know, by implementing the smaller annual rate increases, the 3% for water and the 2% for wastewater, it abords our large and sudden hikes that we're seeing that some of our other agencies have to do. So it eases in that over a period of time. And I know that was an important discussion with the council when we had our planning meetings because that has happened in the past and we didn't want to have to go through that again. And so this approach is good for our budgeting. It helps us predict our budget and then it helps the community in terms of balancing that with not as large rate increases. Going to the next slide. So this is a residential customer, what their average bill would look like. So this is like a family residence using 100, 1100 cubic feet. And they have the 5/8 meter. Their current rate for water would be $65.52. That also includes an estimated average consumption of the 1100 cubic feet. And then with the Utica rate, the UWPA rate of $13.91 and the current rate for wastewater, which is 107.95, and these tie back to those rates that you've seen previously. So a total average bill for the city currently is at $187.38 for all services. We're proposing in year one, if we, if the council was to approve the proposed increases, the, the current bill would go up to $192.37. So that's about $4.99 increase in year one. And then I skipped ahead to what is this going to look like by year five? If we approve consistently the, the maximum amount, so this is the worst case scenario, your meter for 5/8 meter, $75.96, your UWPA fee would be at $18.60 and wastewater would be at 119.19. So over that average of a five year, it increases the bill $5.28 a year is on average monthly. And it's about a 2.8% in total over the five year average. But that's a total of $26.37 a month from where we are now to at the end of year five. And so I thought this was a good average, just to kind of break down, what does that look like averaged over the five years for people? We go on to the next slide. This is looking at non-residential. So this is our, our commercial, our customers. There's a proposed, this is for someone who meets the volumetric pricing. So that is going to be a change this year. We have some commercial customers, non-residential that are on a fixed amount and some are based on volumetric. So I can explain a little about the difference. So volumetric looks at the lowest time of the year, winter use average. So it's January through April of the previous year and it looks at the water consumption and averages how much water do they use? Assuming that for sewer, what they're taking in is what's going out. And so we get a winter use average to determine if they meet the minimum. So everybody is given 900 cubic feet, which is about 65,000 gallons, is that correct? Base, that's in the flat rate, already worked in, there's no additional charge. So that proposed year one of $139 for wastewater includes that 6,500 gallons of water, wastewater going out. Anything over that then receives an additional amount per, per cubic foot out that they would pay additionally. And so currently, right now, we are looking at what they're paying now versus how this is going to impact them. Cause like I said, some of our customers are on volumetric already and other ones are not. So what we're moving to is this model where everybody would be volumetric and it would all be fairly, you know, the rates would be set that way. The nice part is, is that doing that four, four month average, that sets the rate beginning for, as of June 21st is when our new rates take effect every year for the next fiscal year. That would set that flat rate and they would always be paying the same amount every month until the following year. And so looking at this year one, we have, we're going from $136.30 for wastewater to $139.3. And then same thing for the meter, 61.73 proposing to 63.59. Then in the UWPA fee, 13.91 to 14.78. So we're, we're talking about an increase of $6.50 in that first year for those who use the minimum, which is going to be a majority of our customers fall under that. We're also taking the time to look at certain businesses that we know are not, shouldn't be a high use of water and they are currently showing that they have a high usage of water and we're going to meet with them to talk with them because it could be landscaping. They could have their meter, just one meter, and then the option would be to get a landscaping meter. So we'll be making improvements to that because the landscaping meters don't affect, they get pulled out and they're built separately only from water. And so it would save them quite a bit of money going to this volumetric and switching them over because they may only have a restroom in their office, but their landscaping is taking up a lot of that volumetric. So we're looking at them a case by case basis and we'll meet with them and make those recommendations. There will be like a one time charge to set up that meter, but then it'll save them money over a period of time. And, oh, we'll go back one more. So the five year plan would then propose over that period of time, $240.78 is what is estimated if we were to take the maximum amount of an increase from the previous year or for the previous five years, so.
Did you do a percentage on that one?
I didn't do a percentage.
That's a percentage on that one.
So I do have a question. So Michelle, these rates and what we collect is, is based on a 1,700 or so meters that we have installed now. When we install another 107 meters, can the council or can the city or Michael do a study? Could we reduce rates because we're looking at collecting X number of dollars? And if you have more meters, you're going to collect in excess of that amount? So you ever run on with this, Michael?
Yeah, I think for wastewater, you could see a reduction in revenue because some of that could be landscaping that won't be charged for wastewater anymore. But on water, there might be an additional, some amount of additional revenue from the additional meter unless they downsize their initial meter. But I don't think it would be significant enough to warrant updating the study.
Or, or passing that savings on to our current customers? Cause that's what I was thinking about.
As we look and we bring it to the council annually, if it was to occur besides Habitat, which we have planned into the study, say we receive something else and it hit before the end of the five year period, then when we bring the budgeted information, my staff and I are going to be recalculating some of these amounts to set the volumetric rates for the upcoming year. Cause we'll have to do that in-house annually, that analysis. We would then be able to bring that at the time when councils approving the rates for the upcoming fiscal year and give that data to you that, oh, now we have this additional housing unit that's providing more hookups. So we're thinking that this is going to generate this much revenue, so therefore we're recommending a 1% increase and, you know, or whatever it calculates to be. So that's going to be something, but also by the time those hookups and things are happening, we'll probably be contracting again for the next five year rate study. Cause we usually start that in, you know, year four, we'll begin that.
Can I ask one quick question?
Of course.
Just want to make sure that, cause those 107 units were already built, or Habitat were already built into this study.
They are.
Okay. A quick question. The commercial properties, regardless of meter size and the volume that we're using, still the same for 2% to 3%?
Correct.
And 6.2% across the board for everything?
That's the maximum that we're proposing.
Okay.
Okay. Let me go on, Rose. So we're going to focus on UWPA and kind of give you a little history. So in 2024, UWPA presented a So in 2024, UWPA presented a financial, or they did a financial model. They projected their revenues and expenses for five to 10 years. They provided six funding scenarios based on a water year 2.5 with a 10-year average. The city's funding agreement, we were looking at a five-year funding agreement with contributions that aligned with a water year 2.5. Our fiscal year contribution for the current year was $370,000. And then the city will increase their contribution to Utica 10% for the next five years in that contribution. So that was factored into the study. So even though we're increasing our contribution by 10%, we're only passing along a 6.22% in this rate study. We're using some of the reserves. It's pretty much the way we've had Michael run different scenarios to find. Currently, right now, in the five-year plan, it evens out over the five-year period, increasing it 6.22 evens out what we're paying in our contributions and bringing in in rate revenue. It is pretty much flush. So we maintain our reserves for Utica in the current plan, 6.22, and we're able to meet. Now, in between the years, there's some that we will have a little excess income, and then as we get to year three, we're running a deficit in year three, four, and five from what we're bringing in and what we're paying out. But because we had year one and two where it was a little bit more, it averages out that we break even for that five-year periods. Does that make sense? Okay. And so that's why we're passing on the 6.22%. And then in the final period, it'll only be a 5%. So it's four years at 6.2, or is it five years at 6.22, and then the last year at 5%. So we're going to use reserves in between to help ease those ups and downs. And I have run some other models just to look at. I know the council at one time was talking about using some of the reserves. We have about $426,000 in reserves. It was recommended from Barrow Wells to keep a year's worth of revenues. Last fiscal year, our revenues were $406,000 in the Utica fund, so we're right around having a year's worth of revenue in our reserves. But if the council chose to not reduce, or not increase 6.22% and do something smaller, we could use some of our reserves in that situation.
I thought the council agreed to spend down that reserve to $250,000, and that's how we got from 10 to 6%, correct?
We had a lot of discussion around that, but the final recommendation at the end was the 6.22, which evened it out over the five-year period.
And keeps the reserve at $400,000 then?
But then again, that 6.22 is what's proposed in each year. The council would evaluate what they would like to increase.
And that keeps us in one year.
We throw a lot of terms and things around, and so could you explain what a water year 2.5 is? I know what it means, but for transparency...
I'm going to let the expert.
Joel, do you want to explain what a 2.5 year means?
There's no such thing.
I'm happy to. So there are six water year types that we have based on our contracts with NCPA, which is one of our partners in the watershed, and Department of Water Resources gives a projection called a B-120 report. And based on that report, we either get 33,000 acre-feet of water that comes down the hill that we can make hydro with, or, and that's a water year one, that's the best year. And then as it goes down to a water year two, three, four, that amount, that 33,000 gets cut down by 3,000 or 4,000 acre-feet. And in the worst year, which is a water year six, which would be an extreme drought, we would only get about 16,000 acre-feet that we could guarantee to bring through the system. And what that does is it cuts our revenues in half or more. And so that is why the volatility of Utica's revenues is so extreme, because if we have droughts or huge water years, we can make a lot of money or very little money. And the average over 10 years was close to a water year three, kind of right in the middle, but it was a little bit better. And so we wanted to be right on the nose, and so that's why we chose our projected revenue right between a water year two and a water year three, so we called it a 2.5.
And this last year, we are in a water year one, right now currently making the most money. However, we all know how much rain we've gotten this season, which is not great. So it's so unpredictable, and that's why it goes up and down. So just think it's good to explain that.
And so going on through the pass-through costs. So this leads into what Joel was explaining about if we had a water year three through six, the costs may be passed through to the rates under the government code 53756. So what that means is, we can't change in our Prop 218 study for our water and wastewater rates. We can't go higher than what was approved with the 2% and 3%. But Utica is different, because that is a pass-through. And so if we were to have a higher water year, and we would have to change the contribution and provide a larger contribution to Utica, we wouldn't be able to pass this on and increase that Utica fee only to our rate payers. But we also have a reserve. So the key in keeping that reserve is so if we do fall into that situation, we have a reserve of $400,000 to offset that, so we don't necessarily have to pass that on to our, that would be the decision of the council, to pass it on to the rate payers or not as large of an increase to the rate payers.
Well, I think the other reality is, members of the JPA would have to agree to that amount, that additional amount.
They would. Because we would have a contract with the contribution, the set contribution.
Right. So, I mean, if, and I believe that this is probably the most controversial portion of this, and I think the council would have to look long and hard about increasing Utica rates if it's not a water year 2.5, because we're sitting on a $400,000 reserve. And why wouldn't you just burn that reserve? Because that money can't be used for anything else.
Correct.
You know? Part of me was going to propose a different scenario of how to collect money from Utica. And maybe at some point, we can talk about that. Because we are, for this year and next year, we're almost collecting with our current rates our contribution, correct?
Correct.
It's year three, four, and five where we're not collecting enough.
Correct.
So we could lower the contribution in the first two years, and then ratchet it up to the 6% and still meet the obligation, correct?
Correct, yeah. So if you did a scenario where maybe in year one and two, you are at 3%, and then years three, four, and five, you choose to do a 6%. I did run some numbers in that scenario, and over the span of five years, it would eat into the reserves $120,000.
So you'd have about $300,000 left.
Oh, that would be left, wouldn't it?
Left in the reserves, correct. But that's still, that would be assuming we're at a 2.5 the entire five years.
And the other thing too is, we have something, if I'm not mistaken, similar to this already in the water study we have, we're using currently.
This is the exact wording from the previous.
It's the exact wording that we've already had for the past five years. In case there was a water year six for four years in a row, this terminology was already in there in case things went wrong.
Right. And the difference with this year and going to that fixed contribution that we discussed back when Utica did their financial model a year ago, is that previously, we could never predict exactly what that was going to be. So we had, you know, pizza, we'd pay, you know, a contribution, you know, twice the size. One year, it would be reduced in half depending on the reserves. And so that was part of the reason why the JPA wanted to get this model of a fixed contribution. So it provides more stability and easier, like for budgeting purposes when we go through this rate study.
You know, Joel's doing an excellent job right now of taking us through this FERC exemption, which is a federal energy regulatory commission to not have us have to deal with the federal folks with our energy, with our power plants, to deal with our state. And, you know, if we were to license our two, you know, the Murphys and the Angels Camp powerhouse right now, it wouldn't even fall under FERC. And I think there are so many unknowns with that, that, you know, I like the idea of having a five-year plan. I understand there need to be some guarantees if we don't get the water to generate power. But there are so many unknowns too. I mean, if we get that exemption, it's probably going to free dollars up in your budget that you're currently using for FERC, you know? And so how is that going to play into this? So I just want folks to understand that, you know, if a situation occurs where we have to look at Utica rates, we're going to look at everything we can look at prior to passing those rates on to the rate holder, our rate payers. I mean, that's me saying this as a city council. I don't have any more, I have one vote, but that's what I believe we need to do.
Well, and I was going to say, just like we did this year, with the 5, 5, and 10, getting it down.
Yeah, that's exactly. We had good discussions regarding that.
And the only thing I can say to that too is that we, I think we've already done that in some aspects. We put, well, at that time, our city administrator and Murphys and Joel and an outside agent to whittle that down, and that's why we've come to this five-year water agreement. We've already whittled it down on that side too, so.
Go ahead.
No, just say, I was saying, just like the capital improvement projects for the city, the capital improvement projects for Utica, I was on that group, and we went through every single one. It was a painstaking day of going through it and just deciding what was priority, down to high and low, and we moved some things out of the five-year plan so that we could bring this down in money.
And even in that five-year study, we're spending down Utica's reserves. I mean, we're taking their reserve back to almost nothing. So I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, that we have already done that study too there that we're doing at the moment here.
I think the language, it's scary though, and it's about trust. And, you know, of having language like that, that the government code allows us to pass those costs automatically, I would hope that this council would spend time thinking about that. Because I, that, those are, you know, I think we need to be passionate about what we do and understand what we're doing, and language like that, and how we implement that language, either is going to build trust, or it's going to build mistrust.
So is this where the protests went around this language for this?
A majority, I think four of the six.
So can we see the language, what's the concern then in the language? Do they have the language that you don't have to have council approval, you can just do it? So the council's opinion will mean nothing? Or what's the objection?
Do we have the letter?
Because if the council has the ability to make the decision, that's what they are.
I'm sure we do. But I think the scary thing is, is what is the council going to do?
I don't have the website. Oh, okay. But I'm pulling it up now, I can read that. Give me one second.
Someone with languages that they're objecting to.
I have here.
You got it?
UWPA pass-through fee. Should UWPA experience a drought year and require additional funds pass-through, the city may automatically recalculate its rates to include the pass-through amount. If this occurs, the automatic city rate adjustment will not require a public hearing or any additional action by the city council. At least 30 days before the effective date of the adjustment, the city will provide its customers with notice of the expected adjustment, which will generally be calculated as the total projected cost increase divided by the projected meter equivalents.
So it sounds like the objection is that in a drought year, it automatically happens, and the council has no say. If that's the way I understood what you just read?
That's what the government code says, right, Will?
No, the council would have say.
We still would have say.
You just don't have to go through the property team process for the...
Well, it said no input from council, so I think that's the confusion.
It says will not require a public hearing or any additional action by the council.
So it happens automatically, no action from the council, so I'm reading that to say it's out of our hands.
I think that's what the person's saying, though. I don't think that's what legal's saying.
No, that's the language.
Oh, that is, okay.
It's in the letter.
Oh, that's the language, okay.
I'm reading that, I'm reading additional action by the council as relating to the 218 process. So you have a public hearing, all of, you know, the process.
Can we wordsmith that just to ensure that in the event that this drought happens and we have this decision, that the council is involved in that decision, so it's not automatic?
Exactly.
Well, it says in this sentence before, it says the city may automatically recalculate. So I'm understanding that as if they may, so that would be...
The city may, you are the city.
Right, you would be the ones...
Well, yeah, but the city manager can make that decision? Or who make, it's not clear. I think that's the objection, it's not clear. And I'd clarify the language to make sure that the city council would have input in that discussion. Because we don't like the word automatically, I don't like no council input. Or, so those are the two things that I'm concerned with. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we go on to the next slide. Thank you, Rose, for pulling that up.
So much for waiting to the end, Tom.
Right, sorry. Because it's a lot of information, so we're answering our questions with the section. So this is from our rate study. This is the proposed current rate structure. It shows, this slide is nice, because it shows, this is for the pass-through only for the UWPA, our contribution at the top, the city's contribution, and then what that, the growth is actually, that's the growth for Habitat, the 107 additional hookups, and then the rate increase per meter size there.
Michelle, how much impact would there be if those Habitat houses came in at later dates? For example, there's no way your house can be built in 2025, right?
At the time, this was the estimated, right? It would just, that would just shift, because you can see we don't have any factor for growth in the last four years. So that would, that would just shift and generate that revenue later on. Since it's at the beginning of the rate study, I don't think it would have a significant impact.
And then I know I'm missing something here, but in the report, section 4.7 shows we have 1,820 meters, and here we have 2,507 meters. I know that affects the math significantly, so I don't know, what's the difference there?
The difference might be meters versus meter equivalents. So a larger, a meter that's larger than 5/8 would have multiple 5/8-inch meter equivalents. You can see the ratios there under AWWA meter ratio. So if you have one 6-inch meter, that would be equivalent to 50 5/8-inch.
Got it, I see, okay. Yeah, go to 4, okay. Okay, thank you for that.
Next slide?
Yes, please. Okay, so now we're going to get into the budget, where does the money go? So staffing and budget overview. So the salaries and benefits make up one of the largest portions of the budget. The department, meaning water and wastewater only, consists of six full-time employees. We have our public works superintendent with a portion of his time is charged to water and wastewater, because he's also over public work, which is paid for out of our general fund. And then we have a chief plant operator, and then we have our plant operators, and those are the different levels. They can be a 1, 2, 3, or an operator in training, which is the OIT, depending on where they're at in their certification process. Then additionally, six public work employees. So their time is split between general fund, which is their public works, which would be maintaining the roads, parks, landscaping, repairs, city offices. And then they're also the ones out there doing the metering. So our plant operators, they're in the plant, they're not out there in the city. Their public works employees are repairing water lines, they're, you know, they're checking leaks, meters, whatever on-call duties, that's pretty much coming from our public works employees. And so in the budget, there's a portion of their time. When we did a time step... When we did a time study, it was 25% of public works time goes to the, the general fund, and then 75% of their time goes between water and wastewater duties. So that's the current allocation that we have for them in the budget. Can you go on to the next slide? So this is our water, looking at the operating expense, I wanted to kind of break it into key areas of our salaries. You can see that there's our largest, and we go into benefits, and then our operating costs. So those are just your general operating, then we have to have consultants, we have engineering consultants, we might have water, we have the chemicals and testing, which is another large part of our costs in water. There's regulatory fees, we have to pay to the state equipment. This does not include the capital improvement equipment, this is just regular maintenance of our employment vehicles, that sort of thing, and then our utilities in the water budget here. And then the next slide looks at wastewater, similar. The only thing that's different in these graphs is that we have zero debt on our water, but we do have two smaller debt payments that we have to make in wastewater that have been longer-term USDA, very low interest loans that we have. And I believe those all end in like 2035, about that.
About 10 years.
And so we have our debt payments that we need to make in the wastewater program, and then it goes into our operating costs, some of our equipment. Benefits, utilities are higher, electricity is a lot higher in our wastewater versus our water, and chemicals and testing, and then our consulting.
So let me ask you, are we hooked up the CPPA for this electrical?
I believe we are.
We are?
Yes.
Okay, so those of us, those of you who don't know, is that we get our per kilowatt charge is about 20 cents a kilowatt, where PG&E is 40 cents. And the reason why is that we belong to a JPA. When Maloney's was put in, Maloney and Calvers County became first preference. And so they're allocated so many kilowatts a year, and all of the public agencies can benefit from those reduced rates. And so just imagine what utilities, electricity would be if we weren't there. So I mean, it is, I know it's hard to imagine it being a savings because we're paying it, but it truly is a savings when you put in perspective what it would cost for PG&E.
And another thing I wanted to point out, these are all direct operating costs, so that means it's only the people who touch the program or are physically working in the program. We have administrative costs, don't like time for a city administrator, or I have staff who are taking water payments, they're generating the bills, they're entering the metering, that's an indirect charge. And we have a cost allocation plan where we allocate our top, our time based on like number of transactions, HR and payroll processing, number of employees. So it's an approved plan, our auditors have looked at it. And so we allocate a portion of our time, but it's considered an indirect charge. So, you know, and those, I believe, are roughly, they run a year in the whole, the whole water wastewater program of about lower than 300,000 for those costs. And those are in the budget, we bring it to you annually, but it's a very low cost, you know, in a, you know, a three, over $3 million budget between the two. So that's how we, and I think some people are confused because one of the concerns we received was that you're giving, you know, these increases to the city manager, to fire department. None of that touches this budget. If we give an increase to the fire department, that's strictly fire department funds, nothing from the water and wastewater funds, rate payer funds cannot go to fund any of that.
And as I understand it, the last five-year study, the rates that were proposed and then adopted included building in salary increases.
Yes.
Right, Mike? You're probably still wearing school, Mike. But so, yeah, so we have been collecting those dollars over the last four years, and just recently we're able to implement what the rate payers thought we were going to do four years ago.
Yes. So what we, what unfortunately didn't happen the last five years is staff, we have set salary scales and employees have a step on there of, you know, a 5% increase if they meet their merit award, but when they hit the last step, there are no additional increases until that salary scale is approved. And that goes through when we do negotiations, which we just completed. Unfortunately, the last go-around, which was three years ago, there, those increases weren't very significant, there were no COLAs. So we weren't keeping up with the cost of living. And when we did the, a salary survey, so we conducted a whole salary, you know, survey to look at what similar agencies were paying the same type of position, we were like, you know, 20% under, and we were losing employees. And that was a frustration of Chris, that he would train somebody, help them get the certifications, which the city was paying for, for them to get those certifications, and then they'd get a better job, better pay. We couldn't retain our employees. And so this year, with the council's help, has really taken a look at what can we do to retain employees? We've collected these monies through our rate payers because it was part of our plan, but it didn't go back out to the employees. And so we had that increase this year where we implemented, I believe it was for this program in November, a 16% increase to bring them up, they're about 20% under, but we went with 16, and then we planned a COLA in year two and three of up to, you know, the 3%, so that we could keep up with the cost of living. And I've heard feedback from Chris and also Dave, employees are very happy, and they feel appreciated, and they say thank you because, you know, it's been, they were basically going 10 years without a raise.
Shouldn't have done more.
So, and we, and we do have some employees who are a lot at that step five, so that means they get nothing. If you don't give them a COLA, they get nothing. And all these charges are going up. So it was very well accepted, it was something we needed to do, and we could afford it. And it was, we were very lucky to be able to do that, so.
I think it was an expectation of our rate payers, because it was built into the study.
And they will see the COLA now, in the next two years. So I wanted to make it clear. And then the raises that were given to the general fund, our fire department, you know, we had measure A money, so we were able to do improvements. I don't want people to be confused thinking that those increases or adding that new three-man engine is really impacting this, it has nothing to do with that. Those are all separate dollars. And we do have an audit every year, and they're very thorough on keeping those dollars separate, and we count for them separate in our system. This is only rate payer. Another good point in talking about programs we offer, we offer a customer assistance program. We have a flyer there on it for people to take it or give it to people in the community. If you qualify for even PG&E CARES, you can receive up to a $45 credit for water and, so, not each, one is 25 and the other one is $20 for water, 25 for wastewater on your bill every month. It helps offset that cost. We don't go through extensive checking payroll or wages, and we, if you've already been approved, either through like a program with the Resource Connection or ATCA, or if you can show us a bill that you're receiving this program, the CARES program, we will automatically enroll you in that. We have quite a few people taking advantage, it is not 100% utilized. We can fund this program through our late fees. So we don't keep the late fees, even though it incurs administrative costs, we're not, we're turning around in any late fees that we receive, we turn it back around and we invested into this cap program. It can only be funded by non-rate payer revenue, so a late fee is considered that. Or in the future, if we wanted to grow the program, we could look at interest that we're earning on our monies and use some of that to offset or help people with increases.
And so, Michelle, people can go online and fill the application out, they can come by the office and pick up a hard copy?
They can call us.
And call us, and as I understand it, you guys will also provide assistance in helping them fill it out.
We will. Casey, she walks people through it step by step and helps get them enrolled. We want to see people getting enrolled in it.
Well, thank you for doing it.
It's a great program. So we're excited, we've offered it the last couple of years, and we hadn't done that before, so it's a very good option to help. And then we go on to the next slide. So I believe I'm going to turn this back to Steve to close us out.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. So while the water rate increases are necessary, keep the aging infrastructure up to date and ensure compliance with regulatory requirements, I think we discussed that. Keep up with the rising cost of goods and services. The key considerations, the rates remain competitive with the national average. Annually, the council will review the projected expenditures and scheduled projects to set a rate increase which is no higher than what is approved in the 218 study. I think we talked about that a couple of times, that council has an opportunity every year to increase or not increase. If you choose to increase, it is the maximum amount that we're setting through this public hearing next week. Next steps, we do have our public hearing scheduled for February 4th, which is next Tuesday at 6:00 PM in this building. And just want to address the one concern that Council revealed, and I think four of the six of our protest letters have explained, it's through, it's these pass-through fees. And I think you have options. So Michael, please correct me, and Will, if I'm wrong. I believe that we can continue with it as is, not change any of the language, it's legal and it's proper, and the government code allows us to do it. That's one option. Another option is remove the pass-through language altogether. There are some water agencies that even though the government code allows them to automatically increase these pass-through fees from a wholesale water seller, they don't exercise that option. And they make it clear that even if the wholesale water cell, wholesale water seller increases their rates, the individual, the local agency won't increase their rates, and they'll just absorb it somehow. So that's another option. A third option is to adjust the language and modify it so that right now it says it will not require any additional public hearing or action by the council. Maybe it should be it won't require any additional public hearing in terms of a 218 process, but it does require council action. I would propose that we at least do something like that, or perhaps either direction from the council or an actual resolution that says staff does not have the authority to, without council action, raise these rates. I think the government code allows that to happen, but you as a council can say, it has to go through council. Council is the only one with the authority that would allow us as staff to exercise this option in the government code. Is any of that, Michael or Will, sound right?
All of those options sound good.
So I just had a quick question. If we went, I think it was option two that you just mentioned, in terms of redoing the language, then that would require us to re-mail out the notices and stuff before the day period again?
Yeah, there is, there is an option.
Thanks, Karen.
Which at the, at the public hearing, I plan to bring you three options. One is to continue on as scheduled with the public hearing, hear what the public has to say, consider what they have to say, and then take action. You either approve it or you deny it, that's option one. Option two is that you postpone that public hearing for, let's just say, another 45 days. Only because it's 45 days before, let's say we double it and give ourselves 90 days to continue in this process. If you think there's any benefit in providing additional education, additional meetings, if there's more work that needs to be done to educate and inform the public before you make your decision, that could be option two, that we just postpone the hearing for another 45 days. Option three that I will present to you is that we close this current 45-day public notice, and we start a brand-new 45-day public notice, which means that we would have to send out new letters. It would be a cost to the city, I believe it's around $2,000 to send out all new letters, establish a new 45-day period. And there's some benefits, there's a new law that went into effect that would provide some protections for the city if we choose to go through another 45-day process. So those are the three options that I intend to make the next, at the Tuesday public hearing, which is different than these Utica pass-through fees. I think regardless of what you do, my recommendation would be that it's clear from the council that you give us direction, or we bring you a resolution and you adopt it that says we will not, as staff, automatically increase these rates. We have to bring it to the council, and the council has to approve these rates to be increased. That would be my recommendation.
So, Will, if we move forward next Tuesday, do the public hearing, and then move forward with setting these rates, could we, can we include in the motion the language that says that the council has to decide, is won't be an automatic pass-through? Or do we have to, or do we have to open that? I think that was Isabel's question. We don't have to open up the 45 days if we choose as a council to take responsibility for passing those costs on, correct? We could just do it in a motion.
In a resolution.
In a motion, okay.
Because the purpose of the notice is to notify the public of the maximum action you could take.
Okay.
So anything less than that you can do. You can, you can adopt the rate increases, but not the pass-through, for instance.
I believe our report is not final until the end of that hearing, correct?
Typically finalize the report at the, once the rates are approved and adopted.
Can I change some verbiage in there without having to be, so we could just add per council approval, and that would not change anything of the 45-day period to the study, right? Well, we don't, do we, do we need a resolution? Can we add those words in, say, per council in there, per council approval?
I think we could add it to the report, but we wouldn't get into the notice unless you re-noticed it.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's.
And that would re-trigger.
That would re-trigger, got you.
The 45 days.
So that's.
Right, so I think by doing that, because I mean, we started this in July, so I personally don't want to extend anything, but I think if we memorialize it in a resolution, that would be the best way to go about it. And it's something holding us accountable as well.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
And I agree, and I think that makes it clear, because I don't believe the intent of this is that staff just have the authority to do it. I think that the history and the tradition and the intent is, if staff want to do it, they bring it to council, and council either approves it or denies it. But it doesn't have to go through the entire 218 process again before that can happen.
I'm going to pause, and then we'll bring it back. We don't have a whole bunch of public left, but I mean, I would like to encourage those who are here, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I guess so.
This would be a good time to ask those questions.
Is there anyone online?
Is there anyone online, Rose?
Just one.
Any question?
Oh, do you have any questions or comments? And then we can bring it back to council.
I'm trying not to.
Okay, that's fine. Joel, any other comments before I bring it back to council?
Just briefly. So I really appreciate the discussion about the pass-through. I do think that I could see people reading that and kind of go, that seems like it's awfully easy to increase the rates. But I wanted to remind the council, there are some other checks and balances that would have to occur before a request was even made of council. And that is the Utica board, which has two council members on it and two UPUD, would have to make a decision that that was needed. And without that board making that decision, then the request would never even come to council. So there is that check and balance which you were part of. And then the other thing is, the reserve that the city has could be used to not require any kind of an increase. But also Utica can make substantial changes to the budget if we were in a really bad situation, and that is our commitment to do that if we're in a bad situation. It would only be a worst-case scenario with multiple years of water year sixes that we would have to get so desperate that we would want to come back to this council and ask for more. So we would spend down our reserves first, we would cut capital projects back, we would cut our own reserve contributions back, we'd look for operational savings. And only if all of that was exhausted and we still couldn't make it work, would we come back and make a request, not a demand. And it would be a collaborative process where, you know, we're continuously updating this council about that process, and you would have seen years of cuts before any kind of request would come here. It wouldn't be a first-year thing. We can withstand a water year six, we could probably withstand two without needing to get more money. And the whole purpose of the five-year agreement is And the whole purpose of the five-year agreement is if we collect contributions at an average water year, if we have a water year one, which is quite a bit better than 2.5, then it's our responsibility to put reserves away to help ourselves be prepared for a water year six. And that is the goal. But also, if we do get a water year six or five or four, we're not going to immediately come back and ask for more. We need to live within the means that we have and that is our commitment. But it does give us certainty. It gives the council and UPUD certainty. It gives us the ability to know what's coming and know what to budget for. And it does take away a lot of back and forth and negotiation and kind of a big work effort each year. It just takes that away and allows us to move on and focus on other things. So I wanted to make sure that everyone here in the public realize this would be a very, very desperate situation if there were ever going to be a request for something other than what's in the five-year.
And we would hope that our two representatives would bring that back to us for a conversation at the council level and direction prior to voting at the UTICA level.
Hundred percent.
I agree.
Thank you.
You know, I can, oh, now you're, go ahead, Steph. Actually, please, but please state your name for the record.
Brian Stutman, local veteran and chaplain and also a small business owner, looking to possibly bring my business to Angels Camp. So not only as a person that lives here, here in Angels Camp that pays for that, I'm also doing and looking at my one-year, my five-year study because of my business and how it possibly can grow here in Angels Camp in Calaveras County. I would encourage, I would pray also for transparency for next week. And I'm really encouraged to hear everyone, especially with the changing of some verbiage because there is a lot of, with individuals that I normally counsel, deal with, blessed to be around, they don't have a next year's reserve. They don't have a five-years' reserve. They don't even have next week's reserve and they're local. So I think sometimes we humbly forget about that and I know I do myself. So I would encourage the board and everyone's involved to remind ourselves about that. And I, like I said, the other thing for myself as a business owner that is going through some tremendous growth and will be supporting the Calaveras County Bullfrogs in the next years, is that I'm looking at that increase in water consumption. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Bring it back to council? I don't, I asked my wife to talk, she's trying to give me.
I'm sitting right here, I can get him.
Scott, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think this has been, I don't think for me, since I wasn't involved up until this point, so now my questions have been answered. I'm supportive of the fee increases. I think you guys did a good job of keeping them manageable. And I just, I'm not comfortable with the pass-through because, just one example I mentioned off the top of my head is, is we talked about debt not being an option for us because you don't have the revenues at UTICA. So went down the line, the UTICA board's trying to build revenues to qualify for debt and we get into water level three and they said, well, let's get the pass-through because that will help us with our revenue for the debt. Now, that might make perfect sense, but I think that's a discussion that needs to be had at the council level. And so the, I understand the reason the pass-through language is as it is, is because the law allows it. And quite frankly, if you say subject to council approval, you're just saying, well, so what? Everything's subject, you can do anything, subject to council approval, right? So why have that language even in there? But I think it's, I think it's important that it is subject to council approval, to have a discussion. There are legitimate strategies that could differ between UWPA and the council. And I just think that the discussion's warranted. I don't think there's any need to go back to the 218. And I think that this, if we show the discussion, or show the maximum that we could do, subject to council approval, right? And there should be chart, I think there is a table in there that says water level six, it could be pass-through of this amount, right? It gets cast? Yeah, I just want to clarify that.
I think that was the initial study back six years ago. This study, I think we just have the water year 2.5 and then the pass-through. So if it's a water year six, you'll just take the additional cost and recalculate it.
Okay, so there's no set maximum in there for this, so the pass-through was kind of a blank check?
Well, you could always defer. So as the council, you always have the option to defer a rate increase or a pass-through.
As the council, you have that option, but in this report, so the council would still have the option, you know, because if there's no, if there's no set table for a water level four, five, whatever it is, there's no set amount, then that means it is a blank check and certainly don't want that to be out there. So that's, that's my two bits.
I have, I think the, adding the verbiage in there is fine with what we talked about a few minutes ago. You know, I look at our mission statement to provide municipal services, infrastructure and high quality of life through trusted leadership and accountability and efficiency for the benefit of our community. And I, I think this is fair, the 2% wastewater, the 6.7% on UTICA and the three, up to 3% on water. I don't know, I don't want to get back into what I had to do. You were, you, I think, started the process last time with the water rate. You were just leaving. And then I came in and it was rough to raise rates. We hadn't raised rates in a long time. And I just don't, my only thing that I want to say is I don't want to undercut ourselves either. There's, there's projects upcoming and I want to keep that money reserve going so we can give raises, we can keep these infrastructure projects moving, the CIP. And I want to be accountable for that and not let ourselves fall back. So my only, and I have a question of this up two, this up two, that means we're going to revisit this every single year.
And budget it.
And that's, and my only concern is that's a tremendous amount of time that we're going to go back through the same process again. And that, and I worry about that is all. That's a lot of staff time and a lot of time on the council. I mean, we've been at this for quite a few months.
Wouldn't it just come through our budget process? Not, it wouldn't be a separate line of process. It would just come in through budget.
It would come through budget, just, okay, and we would just, we would approve it, we would not have to go through where we're at with the project.
Yeah, bill of recommendation, yeah.
Okay, that's my, that was, that's my only concern is the time on staff and everybody else. And if it's going to come that way, then, and I'm happy the amount of time we've all put in this project, so, thank you very much. And I want to thank Chris, projects are moving along, awesome, thank you very much. Staff, wonderful, thank you. I appreciate everyone.
Yeah, if you can actually, one more, one quick thing regarding reserves, you hit on it. When I was here last time, we had no money, we had no reserves. We were busting our tails to figure out a way to do this. So I'm not as likely to spend down reserves as maybe some of y'all are. I was born in the depression, you know, I don't know.
You look really good.
Isabel?
Yeah, so I just want to say thank you. My hope is that this was transparent and understandable and for pointing out things like the water year and, you know, the terms that we're used to. I, like everyone else, don't really enjoy paying more for things, but at the same time I understand and I think that doing it in these smaller percentages is a little bit easier to divide off and chew. And I think we have done, I'm going to applaud us, right? Because I think we've done a good job of sharpening that pencil and I think we do owe it to our constituents to look at it every year and make sure that what we're doing is the best for everyone. I do just want to say that in terms of the public, I think opposition for sake of opposition is never really beneficial for anyone. It's that whole, you know, if you have a problem and you don't bring a solution, then we're kind of stuck in that same problem. So my hope is that tonight was informative and that the public finds it beneficial. And I invite the public to come to that meeting on Tuesday. I'm a little disheartened to see that after all the chatter that was out there on Facebook and in the public, we have three people show up and zero online. So I'm a little irritated at the public for that. But I do want to remind the public that it's imperative that you know, you're our constituents. You put us in these seats. So if you have questions, concerns, whatever it may be, part of our job here is to answer those questions. So feel free to reach out to us. And like I said, I just really would invite everyone to be, to watch this online. I think there are obviously many avenues that you can get this information and like I said, if you can come to this meeting, I think that would be huge. As we went over at the beginning of this, our timeline, we started this in July. And one of the things that also really irritates me is when people after the fact come to you and say, well, I didn't know. So we do the best that we can to inform all of you. And so my hope is that you pay attention and you ask those questions and you get yourself informed. And thank you for, like I said, for the presentation and for your time.
Carol?
Thank you for all the hard work. That's about it of this. I know it's been tremendous for everybody and with UTICA as well and their input. I am going to go into this rate study on the, or on the fourth, on the hearing with very open ears and I'm, I'm actually open to even restarting if we need to, if that's where we end up with the language change, if it's that, if that is that important and we have to do that, I'm actually okay with it. Don't throw it to anybody. And I also look at it from the legal perspective of restarting and how the laws have changed drastically, starting January 1st for the 218 process. So I think it is worthwhile listening to that if we need to. Brian, to address some of the folks that you meet with and I under, I get where some of those folks are coming from 100%. I hope that you can take some information back on the program that we have to help offset those, that increase for them in the future. And so I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
I'm excited about Tuesday.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank staff and Michael and Will for being here. I want to thank you folks. Thank you. I think, you know, in response to your question, Scott, I think, and help me, Michael and Michelle, I think our current rate, and even with this increase, is still going to build our reserve. We're still going to have money falling to the bottom, correct? That's going to build our reserve. It's not going to be as much, I know, Michael, as you'd like to see, but we're still sitting, if we get these projects done and they, and remember, those, those dollar amounts that were shared were four years ago dollar amounts, and so there's going to be some increase. But we still have that $10 million or $11 million sitting there. And I'm hoping that just with, with minimal increases, we're going to grow that reserve. So that reserve should grow to help offset the cost of our current projects and any future projects. And I think the cool thing is, is that we're moving forward and we're spending the money finally that the community has expected us to spend. And I really appreciate your time that you spent, Michael, on this and the questions and because we have beat this thing up, probably more than any organization. You know, and, and I've had an opportunity now as a mayor to go and talk to folks and I always, I end by saying, you know, we don't celebrate. We're blessed to live in a small community, you know, that provides fire and sewer and police and water and wastewater. And we're blessed to be able to communicate with our, with our, the folks that live here because we live here. And whatever we do around this table impacts what we do. And, you know, and I don't think we take enough time to celebrate. And hopefully, you know, people walk away with the fact that this council has really beat this thing up. And, and, you know, we could have done a lot of things differently, but we're always mindful of our constituents, our citizens. You know, those folks are retired, those folks are on a fixed income, those folks that, that Maria sees, that helping hands, you know, that are working a full-time job and still need support. I mean, we're all mindful of that, but we're also mindful that we've got to continue protecting what we have, you know, and how, if we don't invest in it, as Alvin said, then five years down the road, it's going to cost 10 times as much. And so, and I appreciate what Alvin, you and the council did, while it probably hurt my pocketbook a little bit, but you set the stage for us to only do a 2% and 3% this year because of what we did five years ago or four years ago. So I appreciate that. And so with that, if there aren't any other comments, Steve or Michael, or do you want any other closing comments?
The only thing I have is, Rose has on the screen here, our homepage for our website. That provides the draft water rate study, a link to it, the informational flyer about tonight's meeting, the notice that went out to the property owners on December 20th, the process if you want to protest, along with the water table and the wastewater tables. All that information's on the homepage of our website. Rose, how soon can we get this video?
I'm going to talk with Sam after.
Okay, so we will get this video made available on our website just as soon as we possibly can. And all of it is for the purpose of transparency so people are informed, they have the information to make their opinions known to the council during the public hearing next Tuesday.
Thank you. And we need a motion to adjourn, Rose?
Yes.
All right.
Who made it?
I will.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been a motion in a second.
Bee Hill?
Aye.
Corolea?
Aye.
Moncada? And then take it to Robin.
Aye, thank you.
We need a motion.